Welcome and good evening and welcome to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for June 21st, 2022. Welcome to summer and the longest day of the year. We're gonna have a very short meeting tonight. Item number one, if we could call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here. Thank you very much. Item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what is sand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, are there any approval of the agenda? Any changes? Chelsea?
None from staff, sir.
Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as stated. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. The agenda's been approved. Item number four, consent agenda. Are there any changes?
Not from staff.
Councilor Lehman?
I suppose since you said we have a quick meeting, I can take them all off consent, right? I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I do have a motion for the consent agenda and a second. With no modifications and seeing there would be no further discussion before we vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Chelsea?
4A1 approves the minutes of the June 7th City Council Meeting. 4A2 adopts ordinance 02022-015, amending City Code Section 114 through 106 relating to small brewer off-sale licenses and allows for the publication of a summary ordinance. 4A3 approves the on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for Ruby's Family Restaurant located at 1205 First Street East. 4A4 receives a review of the May 2022 general fund revenues and expenditures as well as the community center, ice arena, and sand venture year-over-year comparisons. 4A5 affirms that the City of Shakopee elects not to waive the monetary limits on tort liability. 4A6 adopts Resolution R 2022-083 approving the city's annual submittal to the Minnesota's Council on Local Results and Innovations Performance Measurement Report. 4B1 awards a contract for manufacturing and installation of Parks and Trails signage to Michael Science in the amount of $176,119. 4B2 adopts Resolution R 2022-082 for a comprehensive plan amendment to figure 4-60, planned metropolitan urban service area in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. 4B3 approves a contract with Tyler Technologies for $60,000, excuse me, for their EnerGov Assist Program, supporting the city's enterprise permitting and licensing software. 4B4 awards a project, Choice Electric, for an amount not to exceed $32,000 that would remove and relocate the power panel at Quarry Lake Park. 4B5 adopts Resolution R 2022-085 which approves the final plat for South Bridge Crossings, fifth edition. 4C1 approves a drainage and utility encroachment agreement for 1567 Hartley Boulevard South. And 4C2 approves an extension in construction hours for the CASA 83 Improvements Project to allow for work to be performed between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM on Saturdays, beginning June 25th and ending November 26th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peterson, and I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda as stated. It has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. The consent agenda's been approved. Item number five, now I'd like to call any resident, that citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Ms. Peterson, have we received any electronic communication?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, then we would move on to item number six, business removed from consent, which there was none. And then we would move in to a couple presentations that we have, and we're gonna start with 7A1, the 2021 City of Shakopee Annual Financial Report. Nate and then our auditors will speak.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Each year, the city is required to have an independent audit from a independent audit firm. That was recently completed by the audit staff from ABDO, and Andy Berg, who's a partner with ABDO, is here to present those results.
All right. Thank you, Nate. As Nate said, I'm Andy Berg with ABDO, here to present audit results. I'll go through the presentation that we've prepared. On the second page there, the items I'll cover is our audit opinion, then we'll jump into some of the general fund results, looking at the fund balance, budget actual for 2021, and then some revenue and expenditure trends. Look at your other governmental funds, followed by your enterprise funds, and then some key performance indicators. And with those, we give you comparison of other cities in Scott County and other cities throughout the state of similar population. So really, what you hire is for is we issue an opinion on the financial statements. In addition to the independage report, we issued two other letters, which I'll talk about those two. So the audit opinion, we issued a unmodified opinion or clean opinion, so the best opinion you can get. As part of that, we are gaining a understanding of the city's internal controls too, but not issuing an opinion on the effectiveness. No internal control findings to report this year. We also issue a report on Minnesota legal compliance. We test seven different areas there, anywhere from cash and investments to contracting and bidding, debt, tax increment financing. Again, a clean report there, no instances of non-compliance. And like last year, we also did a single audit again this year related to the dollar amount of federal funding. So the, really, your ARPA funding was the, what triggered that single audit. Really, a compliance focus and also a financial focus, a clean report there too, so no findings related to the single audit. So really, overall, really good results from 2021. So now we'll jump into some of the financial information, like I mentioned, starting with the general fund. Here we give you a four-year history of your ending unassigned fund balance in your general fund indicated by the orange line. We compare that as a percentage to your next year's budget. So at the end of 2021, you're about 50% of your 2022 budget. Really, that's important due to your main revenue source, your property taxes coming in about halfway throughout the year. You do have a fund balance policy where you don't want that to go below 35% to 50% indicated by the black bar there. You can see you're really in compliance with that policy over the four years presented. So now moving into the activity during the year, here we give you a comparison of your original and final budget amounts compared to your actual amounts, and then show the variance. So the first row there is your revenues. Total revenue is just under 37 million, about 5.4 million higher than your final budget. Two main contributors there, the ARPA funding or the COVID funding that you receive, so about 4.5 million, and then also development-related. Your expenditures came in at about 30.6 million, under budget by about 782,000. A couple main reasons for that, your general government contingency wasn't spent, and then some of the projects were moved and paid out of your local projects fund. So revenue over expenditures, about 6.3 million. You did have a transfer in of 605,000, and you transferred it out 500, or 5 million, 5.2 million, with the bulk of that being 5.4.5 million transferred to your local projects, capital project fund. So total fund balance increased about 1.6 million, ending at 17.8 million. So now moving on to the next slide, here we give you a three-year history of your revenues within your general fund by type. Like I mentioned, your taxes is your main revenue source. You can see a little bit of an increase each of the three years presented, which correlates to the budget on the general fund, fund balance slide. Licenses and permits, you can see that dropped down in 2020, went up a little bit more in 2021, really related to development. And then the intergovernmental revenue, the middle set of bars, that's the increase in, from 2019 to 2020 was the CARES COVID funding, and then from 2020 to 2021 was the ARPA funding related to COVID. And then your charges for service, you know, we saw a drop in 2021, or 2020, back up in 2021, really, you can see the effect of COVID in 2020 there. Expenditures on the next slide, by type, here we give it by general government, public safety, public works, culture and rec. Really consistent expenditure trends correlates favorably with the increase of the budgets that we saw earlier too. The biggest change there is the transfer out, you did transfer out that 4.5 million into your local project fund in 2021. So now moving on to some of the other governmental funds, starting with your special revenue funds. Here we give you a comparison of ending fund balance compared to 2020, and then also a categorization of the fund balance categories. So total fund balance, about 1.7 million, increase of about 328,000, with the bulk of that in your EDA fund of 1.4 million, really restricted for EDA purposes. You also have a couple of smaller funds there. Three of the funds are restricted. The only one that's assigned internally is your Shakopee Government Television Fund. And that's indicated in that graph below with the bulk in that restricted category there.
What would be that unassigned?
The unassigned was back from 2019 when there was a deficit fund balance, and that was eliminated in 2020. I don't recall exactly what the deficit was from. I don't, Nate, do you remember?
I do not.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, the two-thirds drop in Shakopee Government Television franchise fees, I believe they are. Is that what that is?
Yeah, so the Shakopee Government Television, okay, so what that drop would be is we spent some money on upgrading the council chambers, so that's where we've spent the money for that.
Okay, well, I know we had a franchise agreement and there's a modem fee and pay fee and stuff, right? But I know that's coming down because a lot of people are dropping that and going to other, you know, satellite or whatever, or Netflix, things like that, so. Do we know how much that drops? Not that it's important right now, I guess.
I don't know offhand, but we do work with a few cable commissions, joint powers entities, and that is a common trend, and has been over the last few years with people going away from cable. And so it makes sense that that could be it. I don't know for sure if that...
Right, yeah.
Okay. More? Continue, Andy.
All right. All right, so on the next slide, we list your capital project funds, and as you can see, you have a number of different capital project funds here with a total fund balance of about 10.9 million, increase of 3.8 million over the previous year. The first one there, your capital improvements fund, about 5.7 million, increase of 328,000. During the year, you had about 3.5 million on infrastructure-related projects. I think one item to note in that fund, the fund balance is not all cash. You have about 1.7 million of cash. The remaining piece of that fund balance is really receivables at the end of the year. You have a number of TIF district funds, with quite a few of them with deficit fund balance. That's within the TIF plan and funded with interfund loans, intended to be paid back with future tax increment collections. The first TIF fund there, TIF 18 Canterbury Commons, decreased about 1.2 million, really related to infrastructure expenditures during the year. You do have a park capital project fund that is restricted for park projects. Total fund balance there, about 3.8 million, increase of about 300,000. And then your local project fund, that's a new fund with an ending fund balance of about 3.8 million, really created with that 4.5 million dollar transfer in from the general fund. So if we look at the, on the next slide, the categorization of the fund balance, you can see that restricted piece really increased in 2020, a little bit of drop in 2021. Bulk of that's your park fund, followed by some of the TIF funds in that restricted. Your assigned fund balance, that increase in 2021 is related to creating that local projects fund. And then the unassigned deficits related to your TIF funds, again, like I mentioned, intended to be paid back with future tax increments.
Unassigned, the TIF, that we expend money to get it off the ground, and then we'll recapture from the taxes on a yearly basis, correct?
Correct. All right, on the next slide, you do have six internal service funds with an ending fund balance of about 45.9 million, increase of about 1.5 million. The bulk of that is in capital assets, so not liquid capital assets. You do have ending cash of about 19 million in those funds, and then the trend in that unassigned fund balance has increased over the last three years. So moving on to the debt service funds, so these are your governmental debt service outstanding, about just over 37 million, maturing out to 2037. You can see we give a 10-year history of the future principal and interest requirements consistent over the next 10 years. So just important through that budget process to make sure that you're gonna meet your principal and interest payments. So now moving into the sewer funds, with the enterprise fund, we give you a cash flow from operations graph at the top, really indication if your utility rates are covering your costs. You can see each of the four years there, the orange bar is higher than the yellow bar, so the orange is the revenue or the receipts coming in from the utility bills. So you can see you are generating cash flows from operations. Total cash has remained in that, you know, that just over 8 million over the four-year period, so about 8.6 million at the end of 2021, with a portion of that related to connection fees, so your sewer access connections.
On that connection fee, that, is that for the Met Council? Be on the SAC? Is that the Met Council's or ours?
So the piece that's remaining in here should be the city's piece, because you would have remitted the...
We just pass that through on the Met Council aspect, right? Okay. Thank you.
All right, and then on to the storm drainage fund. Again, looking at that top graph there, you had generated cash flows from operations indicated by the orange being higher than the yellow each of the four years presented. The cash has dropped from 2019 to 2021, really related to capital purchases. In 2021, you had about 1.9 million of capital acquisitions. And then on the next slide, your refuge cart fund. Here, this is really set up to pay back the lease on the carts, which ends in 2024. It's really consistent activity over the four years presented.
I had a question on here that I was talking to the city administrator about that. So we had a interloan fund that we changed providers, and we're gonna get out of the cart business, and they're gonna pay us back over a couple years on $450,000 or whatever it was. Is that part of that in this slide?
So what this, this whole fund was set up for was for that specific purpose. So when we purchased those carts with the previous provider, we had loan, interfund loaned the money from, I think, the storm water fund. So we're paying it over time based on like a surcharge that we had.
Right.
Now that we've switched providers, the provider's just paying us a lump sum on a monthly basis to basically pay out this little...
That'll all be squared away. They're paying over time a little bit here, I think, so, okay.
Mayor?
Councilor Lehman?
So when is that completed, that this interfund loan is repaid?
So I'm working out the top of my head, but I think it is 2024. I think you're right. It's about two and a half more years, two, three more years.
And then this page basically goes away?
It will. Based on the agreement, though, we'll have, with new providers paying us a certain dollar amount a month, I think it's $7,500 a month, and it's actually more than what the outstanding balance was on the fund. So there may be some additional funds that, you know, I'm not sure where those, what we'll utilize those funds for, but yes, in theory, this fund will go away once the carts are completely paid for.
That's a, same style of question. Continue.
All right, so on the next slide, we give you a three-year history of your total cash and investments by all those different fund types we talked about. So the first thing to point out, total cash has increased over each of the three years, and really, that breakdown of cash has remained fairly consistent too. I think the biggest change is in that, the yellow block, the capital projects with the increase in cash within those funds, mainly that, the local project fund and your capital improvement fund, along with the park fund in that, that categorization too. So really, kind of gives you a one picture of, here's all the buckets we just talked about and the total cash of the city. So then we'll move into the key performance indicators. Like I mentioned, we give you two comparisons. So the, all the other cities in Scott County, which is indicated by the yellow, and then the class-two cities, which are population at 20,000 to 100,000 in the orange. And then the city of Shakopee is the black line. So we have the tax rate, the first one. You can see all the trend there is that your tax rate has decreased each of the last four years, and you're below both those peer group comparisons. And then your taxes per capita, really fairly consistent over the four-year period, a little bit of an increase in 2021, right in line and slightly below both those peer group comparisons.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, if I'm looking at the 2020 tax per capita, the black dot is below the 600, but below on the bottom, it says 558 for Shakopee. We don't have, why don't we have the bar chart for 21?
So the 21, we don't have the bar chart, because we get that information. The state auditor collects all the information from the cities, which is due the end of this month, and they don't have that ready till the end of 2022, so.
So you show our rate, but you have NA for the class-two and the cities in Scott County.
We'll add that, the 2021 information in next year when we have that available.
I'd be curious to see that information when we have it. So when you get it, can you share it with us?
Yeah, so I can, I can maybe work with you, or I can look at the state auditor's website. So basically, I'll take the information from the audit reports, and there's a separate report that we also need to complete once this is done, and cities have till the end of July to complete that report. So it's probably December, January when they end up publishing that information. I can tell you that our rate for 2022 was pretty much the exact same, that 32.1, so.
I'm curious what the others are doing.
Right. When that, when that comes in, we can see that, right?
Yeah, the county may have some of the tax rates for others, all the other cities in Scott County, but the information from the state auditor, I think it, the 2020 information came out in February of this year, so. It'll probably be, like Nate said, December at the earliest for the 2021, maybe January, February of next year. All right, then a couple debt-related KPIs. The first one there is your debt per capita. No significant debt issued in the last few years, so, you know, consistent and dropping as you're making those principal payments. Again, below both peer groups presented, and then your debt service expenditures, so your principal and interest compared to total expenditures, consistent and lower than the peer groups presented. And then on the next slide, we give you a couple expenditure-related, so your governmental funds, so this doesn't include sewer or storm. The first one there, your current expenditures per capita. That's, so this includes all your general fund, the special revenue funds, the capital project funds. See a little bit of a drop in 2021 where there was increasing slightly from 2018 to 2020, right in line with the other cities of similar size, a little bit higher than all the cities combined in Scott County, which also includes all the small cities too. And then the capital expenditures per capita, that's, that's gonna fluctuate depending on what type of projects you have going on. So the years they have bigger projects, that'll be higher, so in 2020, add a few more projects going on than in 2021. So with that, I'd be happy to take any other questions on the presentations or related to the audit or financial statements.
Thank you, Andy. Questions of our audit team? How many years have you been doing this audit for the City of Shakopee? Five, six?
Yeah, I was, I think it's probably around that five, five, I don't...
Yeah, so I believe this is the last year that we were on a three-year contract, and I think we were on a three-year contract before that, so it would be six years.
Question, Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe not for you, Mr. Berg, for staff, we remind folks and me about the local projects fund. I'm assuming this is that fund we set aside a little bit of money for that innovation center and projects like that?
Well, that, so the local council member and mayor, the local projects fund that was set aside really as an indirect result of receiving the ARPA funds. So we've utilized the ARPA funds towards operations, but we took an equivalent corresponding amount and created the local projects fund. So would it be those projects that we've talked about previously with the ARPA dollars?
Through the ARPA and with DRO police and, okay, yep. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. More? Less? Another great audit, very clean. Again, those issues of many years ago have all been resolved, and we don't see them popping up. So I think the stability of, and the responsibility of our city government is very strong from that. Every time I see this audit, I remember, you know, 10 years ago, we had eight of them, eight little flags, and to see those, I think the accountability of our city for that is much stronger today than it was.
Longer than 10 years ago.
Huh?
Longer than 10 years.
All right, fair enough.
The only ones I recall really that stood out was the same one over and over was, had to do with reseeding at the community center, and it was a staffing issue. It would have cost us more to put the staff in place to rectify it at the time. We're right at that time where you weren't big enough to do it, and it was before the expansion and stuff, and you just couldn't justify it until you expanded. That's the only one I recall.
Okay. If there's no other questions for Andy, thank you and your organization for working on our audit every year. Do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate working with the city.
Thank you.
Any closing comments, Nate? Is that it?
Um, yeah, that's about it. I mean, when you, keep in mind, this is always looking at financial results as a snapshot in time, so you're looking at things as of December 31st, and you're looking for a full year, and... And every time I go through the financial report, I mean, in comparison to the previous year, you want to be in a stronger financial position. And we are compared to where we were a year ago, and we continue to get stronger and stronger financially, so we're continuing to move in the right direction.
Good. Other questions of staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move ahead then to another presentation. Seven B1, a presentation by Excel Energy. And Michael, are you going to intro?
Yes, Mayor. Hold on, let's, let's open here. Mayor and council, we've had a long relationship with Excel. They're one of our major utilities, along with Shakopee Public Utilities. And on an annual basis, Michelle Swanson from Excel has made an effort to keep the council up to date on where they are in various projects. So she's here tonight to provide her annual update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really glad to be here, and as Michael said, I think we've worked really well together. I have really appreciated our relationship and all the different projects and things that we've been able to work on. And so I have several things tonight, if you want to, okay, I have several things tonight that I'd like to touch through this evening, and then look forward to answering your questions. So just, we go another one, sorry. Just as a reminder, I know this is a little bit of an outdated slide because, I mean, your municipal utilities in the process of annexing a lot of Minnesota Valley service territory, but there still are three energy providers to Shakopee. Ourselves, your municipal utility in Minnesota Valley, and we have about 160 electric customers in the city, electric customers, and they're predominantly located near Highway 101. And then while not shown on this map, we serve about 250 gas customers in Shakopee, and our gas business is growing. I think the last time that I spoke with you, we had about 80 gas customers, and now we have about 250. So thank you, Shakopee, for growing. We really appreciate it. And for our gas growth, we're growing a lot in the southwest corner of Highway 169 and Marystown Road, and most of that new development has been along north of County Road 78, if you want to move the slide. So clearly, we have an economic impact in Shakopee. We collected about $347,000 in franchise fees, that's both electric and gas, predominantly, though, electric, and remitted that to the city. We paid the city about $147,000 in property taxes, most recently here in '22 for taxes due in 2021. And we spent a lot of money in the Shakopee community. We spent about $1 million in 2021. It includes with businesses like Biff's, Ditchwitch, Titan Machinery, so we spend a lot of money here in the community.
What does supplier spent mean?
Pardon?
Can you back up to supplier spent?
That's what she was just talking about.
These are dollars that you have invested in infrastructure? Is that what this is telling you?
No, I mean supplier spend is, is things that we might need. If we need to order porta potties or if we're getting machinery from someone or getting something else from Ditchwitch, I'm not super familiar with those businesses, but that's just supplies that, that we need in the course of doing business.
And that's, that's local spent.
Yeah, local spent.
With things like if, if Jake were to take his staff out to, you know, O'Brien's Public House for lunch, et cetera, we're spending money in that way, too. So this is really just kind of the high-level, bigger expenses.
Thank you.
So as we move forward, I want to remind you of our three strategic priorities because it pretty much drives everything we do, and it does relate to things that, that Shakopee should be interested in. First of all, we're leading the clean energy transition, we're enhancing the customer experience, and we're going to keep customer bills low. And as I said, I'm going to mention in terms of how this impacts or interfaces with Shakopee. So as you probably know, in 2019, we set a goal of being 100% carbon-free by 2050. And we were the first utility in the nation to do that, and a lot of utilities have followed us, and, you know, we're pleased that they've followed us on this suit. As a goal towards that 100%, 100% carbon-free, we also have an interim goal of going 80% below 2005 levels for a reduction of carbon emissions by 2030. And as you can see from this chart, we're halfway there already, and that's company-wide, so that's across all eight states. If we move into the next slide, you'll see that, in fact, it's even a better picture in terms of our goal in the Upper Midwest. So in the Upper Midwest, which essentially is the old NSP footprint, right? So that's Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, Wisconsin, and Upper Michigan. We're currently 60% carbon-free and 33% renewable. And in 2030, we will have surpassed our 80% below 2005 levels by, by 2030, and will be at about 55% renewable in the Upper Midwest. So you might be wondering, what is the future of Blue Lake if we're going carbon-free? And our, the gas plants, our gas plants, based on our most recent resource plan, are expected to run well into the 2040s. And I'll be updating you a little bit later in this meeting in terms of some changes that we're going to have at the Blue Lake plant, but we're clearly investing in that plant when we get to that part. So right now, natural gas is really important to keep on our system. I mean, it, we need it to ensure reliability. On the hottest and coldest days, we need natural gas to be there, and on the days that the wind doesn't blow or the sun doesn't shine, we need firm dispatchable load to get, to, to rely on. And so natural gas is, they're going to be a very important part of our energy mix. And I also just want to mention that natural gas is also part of our whole transition to carbon-free. I mean, right now, we're pursuing things like generating carbon at our nuclear plant, Prairie Island, with the Department of Energy, to create hydrogen, which is carbon-free. And the idea would be, let's take that carbon and can we use that at our natural gas? Can we run our natural gas plants on hydrogen? That's one of the things that we're looking at. Other organizations are really looking into renewable natural gas, and we'll be looking at that in terms of how can we use that at our natural gas plants? And so going to zero emissions doesn't mean you're not going to be using your natural gas plants. And in fact, one of the reasons why we chose that, that 2050 timeframe to be carbon-free is we need kind of a long term in order for technology to develop. And one of the other things we're really going to be looking at with respect to natural gas plants is carbon storage. You know, what if the technology for carbon storage breaks through and we can run our natural gas plants and capture the carbon? And then, you know, so we're really excited about the possibilities. And of course, it's really important that when we get to that point, these technologies need to be affordable and reliable. So, you know, we have, we have technologies now that people say that we can use, but they're not available at the scale that we need it to be and to be cost-effective and reliable. So we're very excited about that. And just a note, I won't talk about it today, Jay's going to be familiar with this, but at some point, I'd like to come back to the city council and talk to them about possibly joining the Carbon Free Coalition that Excel Energy is currently giving presentations and getting members into this coalition. Essentially, it's a coalition that we're building for companies, communities, associations, individuals that would support our journey to carbon-free, but they also support the fact that it needs to be done affordably and reliably. I mean, you have to have those elements, and you need the timeframe of out to 2050 right now in order for technology to develop to do this the right way, but that's a whole nother.
Isn't that kind of trying to slow down what the, I'm sorry?
Councillor Lehman.
Isn't that trying to slow down what the, the government, federal government is trying to do? You're trying to slow down what is perceived as the goal?
I don't think we're, no, I don't think we're trying to slow down anything. I mean, the organizations that we worked with, like the Electric Power Research Institute, MIT, and other research organizations, have done a lot of research and said 2050 is, is the right year. I mean, to, at least at, at the point in time where they were reviewing this, which is the past couple of years, to think that you can get to 100% carbon-free affordably and reliably probably can't happen till 2050. But that being said, if there was some incredible breakthrough in the next 10 years, I do think we would reevaluate getting there earlier, but that's the, that's the best advice that we've had with the people we've worked with to figure out what should that planning horizon be to get to zero.
Right. After your presentation, I looked into it a little bit, and you had mentioned long-term for technology to advance. And my thought is, in the short term, you're the people that should be driving the technology to advance this goal, to make it faster.
Yeah, and I think we are. I mean, quite frankly, you know, we applied for a DOE grant to partner with DOE to do this hydrogen production at our nuclear power plant. That's a carbon-free resource that we could potentially use at some of our other facilities. And in addition, being a member of the Electric Power Research Institute, we give a lot of money to that institute, who's a trade association for the investor-owned utilities, who's doing an incredible amount of research in terms of technologies. And I know that we've got different departments at our company right now. In fact, we had a department just established that's going to look at hydrogen, you know, an entire department looking at hydrogen. So I think we are vested in research in those technologies.
I think, I think we've come a long way. I mean, you're looking at that coal at 18% in '21. If you just go back 10, 15 years, that was 30%. And, and the projected there in just eight more years or so is to go to zero coal. Techno, you know, this, if we had a chart from this for 20, 30 years ago, you know, it would, this is, this is technology at its best right here as it's coming forward. Councillor Lehman?
Well, I think that the thing you really got to think about from now till 50 is, you know, we're looking at these charts, and you have 27, 26% nuclear. That number could change. You know, you could have some decommissioned, you can have new technology, technology come forward where, you know, it's much safer and more, more available. So these numbers can really change depending, you know, same with wind, solar, and other forms. You just don't know what kind of technology is going to impact each area on the chart. You might, you might find that wind power, instead of having these great big giant blades spinning, flying off, killing people, and, and you can't dispose of this stuff, there might be a new technology to capture wind that is much smaller, more efficient, you know, more recyclable, and then that would then be incorporated, incorporated into a future plan. So I get it, there's going to be a lot of tweaks with technology as you go, and new things might be added, you know?
Right.
Like you were saying with carbon, so.
I mean, other things that people are looking at, advanced carbon, much more, or excuse me, advanced nuclear, so much, much smaller, compact reactors, for example. Maybe battery storage will, will really come to light in the next 20 years where we can have, you know, a one-magawatt battery storage, and it'll last four days and not four hours. So I think, I think there, you know, we saw how fast technology has developed in the past and how much the cost, for example, solar went down, and just the, the leaps in technology, and we're confident it's going to get there. But like I said, we've given us, ourselves this runway. But Councilmember Whiting, I can certainly go back, because I know you're really interested in this, and I think you had similar questions in the chamber meeting, of talking to some different people internally and maybe getting back to you in terms of some of the different research and some of the different things that we're looking at in that regard.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I am interested in that, and my thoughts were, I thought 2040 was the goal rather than 2050, and I think that if we push, and we, and Excel is a big company, if they push and they put some money towards it, they can get there, I think, faster. And you're mentioning technology, but pushing it out to 2050 is not what I see as, as a goal. I see it 2040, maybe, even less.
You know, our, just, I appreciate that, and I do think technology has sped this all up, and I agree that it will change. But I believe our state had one of the most aggressive renewable goals, you know, I think in 2020, or in 20, 20, 2000, in 2000, I thought we said 25 by 25. And every utility out there, public utility, has beaten that by, we're already there, right?
I think we are in a very progressive state. I mean, Minnesota Power actually took up the same goal after we set ours and wants to go to zero carbon by 2050. So it's pretty exciting. I don't know if I agree with you, Councilmember Whiting, on 2040, but I appreciate the feedback. No, and I, it's good to push, it's good to push. So thank you very much for your comments.
Councillor Lehman?
You know, the United States could be 100% carbon-free, but when China's adding coal plants and India's putting, and you, you know, you hit a golf ball in China on a golf course, and you can only see it about 100 feet.
Yeah.
Where, we alone are not going to solve this problem.
Right.
You know, what it's going to take is, I, I don't know why a couple of countries don't just hand them a couple of catalysts for stacks on their, their factories and say, here, it's free. I mean, it would save, it's, it's damn near free and would cut pollution in the world more than we could ever do. So I, you know, we're spinning our wheels, spending a lot of money, making a lot of heartache when the larger issue is not America. We are one of the cleanest countries on the planet, and the issue is really these other ones that aren't doing anything.
And I don't disagree with that. We do, although, have, customers are kind of demanding, you know, that we go, that they're, that we go carbon-free, reduce our carbon. Lot of businesses have very, very lofty sustainability goals, and they want things from their utility like Excel Energy to help them with their sustainability goals. But I do recognize it is, it's, it's an international issue, and China and India clearly are not doing their part.
We're, we're not going to clean up China sitting right here.
Right. I agree, I agree with that.
All right, proceed.
Okay, all right. So moving on to the second priority is enhancing the customer experience. And, you know, one of the things that Excel wants to do is we want to have programs that our customers want that can save them money, et cetera. And so let me give you a few examples of some customer-enhanced experiences that Shakopee hopefully will take advantage of or does take advantage of. So one of the things is that we offer more than 150 energy efficiency programs for customers to help manage their energy use and lower their energy bills. And many of the customers in Shakopee take advantage of this. This is both residential customers and business customers. So they're taking advantage of these programs, and they're lowering their bills. And so these are your residents and your businesses that are managing their energy costs, that are trying to save money so they can invest their money elsewhere. And in fact, every year, we summarize what your residents and what your businesses are doing in your city. We do this for every community that Excel serves in Minnesota, for sure. And so, you know, I've got a document here that'll say how many residential customers participated in wind source, how many business customers participated in, you know, the lighting program, the HVAC, et cetera. So, you know, this is serious business to us. We quantify the greenhouse gas impact of those actions for your community. So if that's something of interest to your city staff, or if you've got a sustainability coordinator that we can provide, but, but that's one of the things that is benefiting Shakopee, your residents, your businesses. The other thing I just want to mention is we've really grown our economic development department in the last few years. We had a department of three, I think, maybe two years ago, and now we have nine people in that department. And I think Michael can attest to the fact that recently, I would say in the last two to three years, we've been actively working with the city to get prospective, prospective customers to locate or expand here in Shakopee. Of course, you know, we want them to locate in Shakopee's electric service territory, you know, and any other utility who would sit here would say the same thing, so anyhow. But we've been working with the city a lot on that, and we'd really like to grow our electric business, and we want to grow our gas business here, too. And again, we've got an ED department that's actively working with the city to see what we can, how we can help out. We have a national presence. We travel to a lot of different conferences, and we actually kind of market properties. And I know the building out in the Henches property, the large 500,000-square-foot building that I think lost its potential occupant, we're actively trying to talk to folks that we meet across the nation to be able to see if that's a good fit for them. So that's one of the things we're doing, enhancing the customer experience for Shakopee.
Right. Thank you.
And then I think one other thing, if you want to go to the next slide.
Did I, did I, did I hear that right? You want to expand your natural gas customer base, so use more natural gas, but then on the energy production side, you want to reduce your use of natural gas?
Right, and, and they're not inconsistent.
Pardon me?
I will say that.
They sell.
Because one of the other things we're doing, and I'm not prepared to talk about it tonight, but we also have set a goal of net-zero natural gas emissions for our gas business. And so that's, that's a more complex and less understandable concept than our 80 by 20, our 100% carbon-free by 2030. our hundred percent carbon-free by twenty fifty. But we are looking to be net-zero in our natural gas system so that we can get to that hundred percent carbon-free. And I can provide additional information to you on that, but.
Well, I'm confused. I apologize. I'm missing something here. But if you're expanding a gas line to a business and they put in a whatever that uses the natural gas, is there not emissions coming from that natural gas in my kitchen stove, for example?
You know what? There is. And you know what? We're gonna have to manage that. But we have a lot of different opportunities to be able to manage. You know, if we bring on new gas customers, okay? We have a plethora of efficiency programs that those gas customers can use. So we start to lower their energy use there. But then, again, we are looking at some technology to advance where we're hoping that there are some other technologies that can eventually bring those down to a net, to a net zero than that. So it may be that there are gonna be offsets with the gas side of our business.
So like the eighty percent furnace compared to the ninety-eight percent efficiency furnace?
Making your devices more efficient and effective.
That's what I just said.
Yeah. Much like your light bulbs, that we went from the old style to twisties to LEDs. It's, you know, driving that.
I think it's a more difficult nut to crack, but we do have that goal as well, to be net-zero in carbon emissions for natural gas. So one other customer experience that I know that we share, that we hope to share with the city is our EV programs. Our EV area is another area where we have really ramped up some excellent staff in terms of really knowing the business of electric vehicles. And we met with city staff, that would be Michael, and went over the different EV programs that we have to offer. And it sounds like the city of Shakopee is going to apply to our public charging EV service pilot program. And so assuming that application is approved, and I have no doubt that it will be, we would install all the infrastructure up to your fast-level charger. The city would buy the fast-level charger. We install all the infrastructure up to it. And based on past projects that we've had, that infrastructure is valued somewhere between sixty thousand and a hundred and fifteen thousand. That's typically what we spent to install the infrastructure and bring it right up to the charger. So that would be very exciting. My understanding is it would be the first fast charger that the city owns in Shakopee. And of course, it's exciting that it's in Quarry Park and near the mountain bike park. And it sounds like there's just gonna be a lot of other things going on in that park that's already gonna make it more use than what it already is, from what I understand.
So does the user pay for the electricity and the infrastructure and the charger? Or does the rest of society that may not use it pay for it?
Well, we're paying for the infrastructure.
Well, you're charging that back to the customers that you have.
Yeah, we have a pilot program, and we have permission to go find customers like this to participate in the program. So it's covered for, by the rate payers, et cetera. But the users who plug in are going to have to pay in some regard.
The consumer always pays for the power that they use to plug in their car, whether it's a.
So then the next question is, in your long-range plans, when you show different sources to produce energy, rolling into electric cars, if we had fifty percent use of electric cars in Shakopee and everybody charges their cars at night, obviously, we're gonna need more electricity capacity.
Right.
Okay? We're gonna need heavier infrastructure to carry that capacity. And is that planned into your long-range vision?
Yes, it does. And in fact, we have a goal of powering one and a half million EVs across our eight-state area by twenty thirty. And you're exactly right. That's exactly what we want them to do. We want them to charge at night. That's when we tend to have more, like, when the wind really blows at night, it's cheaper to supply the power, so that's exactly when we'd want them to charge. But we're anticipating, that's part of our whole planning effort. You know, we go through our resource plan every two to three years, and it takes typically a couple of years to get through all our stakeholders and get approved by the PUC. But that is the exact type of planning we do in terms of building our system so that it can handle increased electric vehicles, you know, expanding businesses and everything else. So that's what we plan for in those plans. We're taking all of that into account.
Continue.
Okay, we'll move on. So the third strategic priority is obviously keeping bills low. So energy affordability is a top priority. We have to keep, we have to keep power reliable and affordable. The average monthly electric bill for an Excel Energy residential customer in Minnesota was twenty-three percent below the national average in twenty twenty-one. And an Excel customer was seventeen percent below the average bill of a non-Excel Energy customer in Minnesota. So, you know, we, as you know, we're in for a rate case. It's a three-year rate case. It's something on the order of six-hundred-and-forty-four million dollars over three years. But that rate case is meant to be able to build the transmission and distribution that we need to, for example, bring renewables to the market. It's meant to replace aging poles and lines. Making our system more resilient, making our system more smarter, putting more devices on our system so they can talk to one another. So if there's an incident or a potential outage at some part of our line, there's an instant communication from a device that's gonna be able to go back to our control center to say, kind of, to give them insight in terms of what the issue is. So we're making the grid smarter. But it takes investment. I mean, to say that we can't ever increase our prices isn't likely to happen. But one of the things we do to try and offset that, that we're really good at and that I've already talked about, is we're an industry leader in our demand-side management, energy efficiency programs. And so we are constantly expanding these programs so that we can offer them to more customers in very specific uses to lower their energy bill. You know, you can have a higher rate, but if you've got an energy efficiency program or if you're on a special interruptible rate kind of program, you can actually lower your bill even though your rate might have gone up. So I hope that makes sense. But we have ways of managing people, so even if our rates go up, we have ways of managing, offering people to manage their energy bill so that their bill doesn't go up by as much as perhaps the rate does. And then moving on to the uplifting part of the presentation is partnerships. So, you know, last fall, we had this ribbon cutting for the Excel Energy Mountain Bike Park. I think there were about two hundred people there. I think several of you folks were there. A lot of bikers. As I understand it, that mountain bike park is like busy every single day. And then it's exciting, Michael had told me that the Minnesota Cycling Association race, their first race is gonna be there in August. It's gonna track a thousand bikers and probably two thousand spectators. And it's a very competitive process to be a site in that Minnesota Cycling Association race. And it's only one of two metro courses that are in their series. So that's a compliment to, I guess, all the partners. If you recall, the partners were the city, Excel, Shakopee Midwack and Sioux Community, and the school district. And it's really come together in what just seems like an incredible project by all means.
No, very collaborative and with Excel's help, and you're right, our other partners. And we have a best-in-class mountain bike park now that's actually drawing attention all over the metro. And it's great to see, and it will only get better as more awareness comes. And we're thankful for your partnership with that. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we really enjoyed it, too, so thank to all our partners with that. Okay, on our next.
Another one.
I'm sorry, pardon?
Here's another partnership.
Yeah. And this is the most recent one. Unfortunately, I wasn't present for it, which I was a little bummed about. But recently, we had an event with the city and Scott County. The project that we had, I had talked to Michael and Bill Reynolds and had mentioned in the past that we have these different pollinator projects, a lot of them in Bloomington, for example. Transmission corridor, we own it. Instead of having to mow that all the time, let's put pollinator in it. Much less maintenance costs for us, but helps the environment, attracts, you know, the pollinators. Generally speaking, most residents like it once it gets established. That's the one drawback. It takes probably about three years to get established. But a few weeks ago, an eight-acre plot of land, we planted pollinator habitat. Scott County provided the tractor and the labor to seed that eight acres. Excel Energy paid for the seed, I think it was maybe two or three thousand dollars. And then the city is going to take care of the maintenance, which I think predominantly is some mowing during the course of the year. So this is the largest pollinator planting in the city. And it's unique because it was actually farmland. Usually, when we partner on these projects, it's turf. So it might take a little bit more to prep it. Probably will take a little bit longer to, it still probably takes a standard three years to look good. But there's a very good chance that the farmland that we planted this seed in might react better more quickly for the pollinator planting. So that was very exciting.
That is, and Counselor Brennan and Counselor Contreras were there. And actually, Counselor Contreras, I saw a video of you talking about the bees and stuff. That's awesome.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
So moving on, community engagement is very important to us. We like to be involved in the community. We certainly think we have been involved in the Shakopee community. We've been in the chamber for over twenty years. We sponsor a lot of things at the chamber. And what's nice about that is you get a lot of community members at some of these chamber events and not just the businesses. We're a headliner sponsor again this year for Rhythm on the Rails. And I'll be there tomorrow night. I hear it's gonna be hot and humid, so. But anyway, but we sponsor a number of things for the chamber that I see a number of you folks at, and I meet a lot of new people, too. And of course, what's great about the Rhythm on the Rails is it's a community event. It's beyond a community event. It's free, and it's great. I had a great time last year, so. And also, we do belong to the Member of the Shakopee Key Leaders Forum. So I think I've really talked a lot right now. I'll try and whip through this. I do have Jake Gundry with me tonight. He oversees all the gas and oil plants in the Upper Midwest. He's the director of those plants. He has Blue Lake under him. And I'll just say, Jake, if you think I missed something or I got something wrong, come on up. So anyhow, but we've got some exciting plans for Blue Lake. I mentioned earlier, we're investing in Blue Lake, so we expect natural gas. We expect that facility to be here. We wouldn't be investing if we didn't think it was gonna be here for quite a while. So this is an aerial view of the Blue Lake plant. And currently, the site has four combustion turbines that run on fuel oil. And they have two combustion turbines that run on natural gas. And the summer capacity of the entire plant is about four-hundred-and-forty-nine megawatts. So what we're planning on doing is retiring the four combustion turbines that run on fuel oil. And we're gonna replace them in part with three natural gas reciprocating engines. So the primary fuel for those new reciprocating engines will be natural gas, but they will be capable of burning diesel fuel as well. And so the benefits of that is it's gonna increase the reliability of our plant. It's gonna improve the efficiency. It's gonna decrease emission rates. And as I alluded to earlier, it's really a part of our clean energy transition strategy. These new engines can come up or down within minutes. And so they're key to complementing the intermittent renewables. So if renewables, you know, if wind drops or maybe solar, clouds come over, these reciprocating engines can ramp up immediately. So they're really playing a major role in terms of working with our intermittent renewables.
It's still gonna be a peaking plant, right?
Pardon?
It's still gonna be a peaking plant of what it always was. But it's the speed and efficiency that you're gonna expand, so good.
Does the new equipment have more capacity than the old equipment?
No.
No?
Correct. Of course, it's correct. He's the plant manager.
So why wouldn't we be adding capacity knowing that you're gonna need more capacity?
You wanna come up?
Sorry.
Why would we not be adding capacity if you're gonna be needing more capacity?
Michelle talked about the resource plan that we file every few years, and that's built.
Speak into the mic, please.
Yep, sorry. Michelle talked about our resource plan filed every few years. A lot of our capacity needs are dealt with through that resource planning effort. Like Michelle's talked about, our wind and solar keeps increasing. The need for baseload capacity is decreasing. But the need for faster response units, like the ones that we're gonna install, is a much smaller capacity. So we don't need the same, we don't need to replace the same megawatts with those faster, smaller recip engines, if that makes sense.
Little spurts.
Will we be losing capacity?
Efficiency.
Will we lose capacity with your upgrade?
No. The four oil units that we're retiring are nineteen-seventies units, very low efficiency, don't run more than one percent of the year. So we're not losing any capacity at the site, in my opinion, for actual capacity factor, how much we run throughout the year.
Faster, better technology.
Yep, yep.
Newer technology.
Baseload plants take days or hours to ramp up to load. These will, like Michelle said, take minutes, so.
Great. Counselor Brennan?
I have a question. Shakopee SPU is in that Blue Lake area? And do you see any changes to that?
Oh, in terms of?
Say that one more time, please.
SPU is currently in that location. Do you see any changes to that?
I'm not aware of any.
This is a different site.
Okay. Thank you.
This is the Blue Lake peaking plant.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I think, I don't know if you're calling it mean, I think at one time, doesn't Shakopee Public Utilities have like a transmission line or a feeder or something in our Blue Lake substation?
Yes. I don't think any of that's changing with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're planning on submitting our application to do this work to the PCA, DNR, et cetera, in late twenty twenty-two. And construction is expected to start in spring of twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to offer to all of you, I don't know if any of you, other than walking to the groundbreaking for the mountain bike park, you walked through our site. But if you folks would like to have a visit, come visit, and we invite city staff, obviously, as well, too. But it would be really great, maybe in a few months, when we have more detail, to have you guys on site to take a look at the site. And then perhaps at that time, we can also talk about where things may be going, shifting, what new equipment may be coming in there. But I'd like to open that, do that invitation and maybe follow up in a couple of months with staff to see if that can be arranged.
That'd be a good idea, Michelle, and bring that up with staff and see what comes with it.
We could ride our bikes.
There you go.
There you go. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Okay, and finally, I know this has lasted a long time here, but another project we're working on is the new alternate access. I mean, you guys are familiar with this issue. Several times a week, our access to our plant will be blocked from anywhere from twenty minutes to a few hours. We've been looking at an alternate access for a while. We've been working with Steve Lilahog. He's been great to work with on an alternate access. I think we thought that south access, you know, basically, you build the park road. We go from the park road up into our plant was gonna work great. But we think there might be another possibility that might work better. And that's going on the north side of Quarry Lake in that old existing emergency access, was it? And that's beneficial for a couple of reasons. Number one, we're not crossing the bike path with that access. And the other thing is, is in the other access, it's not terrible, but where we would bring it up into our property is probably gonna be in a working area of, when we do our conversion, where we bring that access road is gonna be really close to where we're gonna be having different construction activities because of the conversion project. And so the north alternative, though more complex because more stakeholders are involved, has some real possibility. But it's on us right now to have discussions with those stakeholders and come back to the city with what we found and see if we can make that happen. And if we can't make that happen, going back to the drawing board on a different access. And if we can't make that happen, going back to the drawing board on a different access.
Well, good. More questions? Counselor White?
No, I just wanted to say that I, I hope you can work with the partners out there. I think that is as far superior a way of going than, than cutting into all the traffic, going to either the ski club out there or the bike trail. Just makes more sense. There's a road already there, so I hope that works out.
Okay, great, thanks.
I have one last.
Counselor Lehman?
One last question, Mayor. I noticed that the Shakopee Midwakken Sioux took down their wind turbine thing.
Okay.
And I saw your map, most of Prior Lake was on your system. I don't know if that wind turbine is theirs or yours. Do you know if it's getting replaced, or?
Actually, I think Minnesota Valley or SPU serves them. I don't, I mean, we don't serve like the Mystic Lake Casino, for example. I think that's Minnesota Valley. So I do not, I can't answer your question, but I don't think it's ours.
I think we cycle out over time. I have heard they're not going to replace it, but.
I have another question. Are you doing some undergrounding of cables on 101? No?
Are we undergrounding cables on 101?
Are there railroad tracks on 101 by Valley Fair along there?
Are you?
There's been some utility work along there.
I know there's a monument out there off of 101, and we're looking at the power pole that blocks the monument. I don't know if there's any undergrounding going on out there, but I can follow up, Councilmember Brennan, and get back to you on that.
On the south side, I think, that, on the south side in between Bramillows and coming into town.
Between Bramillows and the glass plant?
Yeah.
Yeah, some-
On the south side between what?
Valley, uh-
Valley Park.
Valley, yeah.
And eighty-three on the south side. You know, that might be a railroad, uh-
Right.
Issue.
Moving some new-
The railroad might be doing some of that because they're preparing for a crossing upgrade on 101 at some point.
Yeah, if you can check on it and get back to me that upgrade.
Thank you. More, Counselor? More?
Thank you.
Thanks for being a strong community partner. Thank you for your presentation. And some do like it hot.
I guess I will like it hot tomorrow night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's proceed here. Eight A. The city bill list is in front of us. Any comment, questions on the city bill list? For your review? Seeing none, then, we would start with eight B. Our liaison administration report. Counselor Brennan?
Okay. I have a, I have a few things. I attended the scale meeting on June seventh, and the Maxfield Study on Housing was presented to those in attendance. I met with Tim Zunker with the Shakopee Chamber. We talked about the Shakopee Hotels. And really, we have a lot of really great partnerships and, and people that are stepping up to present, to provide events in Shakopee this last week. I went to the picnic with the police that Hart Ministries and Mikasa hosted. I also want to thank the JCI's for hosting the big, big, the big, big, the big taste of fun this weekend. And I attended the Juneteenth celebration that was hosted by the Shakopee Diversity Alliance. The SPU will be at tomorrow night's Rhythm on the Rail event. And they will be having a presentation or a booth that's about EV charging and, and the rates that are available for EV charging. Last night, we had a SPU meeting. And they talked about the outages that have been going on recently. And there's been contractor hitting a feeder with a back hole while installing a water main on, on stagecoach. There was a faulted mainline URD feeder cable on Eagle Creek Boulevard near the one sixty-nine overpass, and that affected one thousand one hundred and ninety-three customers for fifty-one minutes. There was a squirrel issue. And there was a couple of trees that went down in the wind in June fourteenth and June sixteenth. So there's been a lot of activity on outages, but they're getting taken care of. I attended the Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting today, and they had a presentation on early literacy. And they also had a presentation on absentee voting ballot board and ballot opening processes. And it was very complex, but it was very informative, and they will have that online for people to take a look at. And I think that's it.
Counselor Brennan, thank you very much, and moving ahead, Counselor Lehman?
RTF, the discussion is, there's a study being done to see what the future of the Regional Training Center might be. At the same time, we have a retirement of the existing manager out there, which is coming up kind of rapidly here sometime August, September. So it's hard to put a job description together for, to put out, to have somebody replace that person not knowing what the direction is of where we're going until you get this study back and say, and agree or disagree, and mold it to what everybody's vision is. So, a couple of special meetings on that. Might have a possible intern person. You don't know if that's the right person because you don't know what the future plan is. You know, and then you got to take that future plan and see if it's what our expectations are and all the members' expectations are. So, kind of fluid at the moment on that whole RTF. Although I think there was a conversation about fees going up in one of the, it was either RTF or Scale because they're back-to-back. I think it was Scale, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, so. We'll have to see where that discussion goes to and what it's for. And, you know, the original concept was to add people to both the RTF and for Scale to be efficient, find efficiencies in government. Scale spent a lot of time discussing the housing issue. In the meeting that I was part of, the Maxwell Study was being updated, and I haven't seen the updated version of that yet. So I don't know if you've seen the updated version yet or not, but I haven't seen it. What did they say, fifty homeless kids in Scott County and in the school system? So, may not, you know, one, I guess, is too many, but, you know, you would have... Fifty's not bad, but one is too many. So I'm looking forward to seeing that full study. But then I'm really looking forward to seeing what possible solutions are because, you know, at some point, you, whether it's power or housing or whatever it is, it's just like everything else. You just keep taking from that middle class until pretty soon you can't take no more, and you've created a problem worse than what you started with. That tends to be what some levels of government are extremely good at.
Yeah.
So, we'll see, we'll see where this all pans out.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Counselor Lehman, thank you very much. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the picnic with the police. What a great event, you know, just getting out and mixing with the community. It's really not an appreciation. We, we appreciate our police, but it's more of a party that the police throw. So I think it's great. The Big Taste of Fun, formerly known as the Taste of Shakopee, that was, I attended that. That was a great time watching the Ironman bike race, them coming in, in the park. I think that was a lot of fun. They parked their bike in a little parking area and then go enjoy the festivities. So, great time there. Also, Rhythm on the Rails starts tomorrow night. Arch Allies, come on down. We don't care if it's hot, right? It'll be fun.
Some like it hot.
Some like it hot. That's right. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you very much. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, it's pretty short. I just attended the picnic with the police. And again, just echoing what everyone has said, it is a great event. And I guess my question is, can your police department zumba?
There you go. All right. For my mayor's report, obviously, that picnic with the police, great outpouring from our community. Coming up, we have a lot of activities Friday. The Beach Bash, Sand Venture, Friday from eleven to two. Lot of fun, prizes, games, contests. And I heard Bob the Beachcomber, who I'm a fan of, is going to be there, so that is awesome. And also the farmer's market ahead of Rhythm on the Rails. That's from nine to one in the parking lot as well. So I think it's real interesting. In the last week and a half or two weeks, we have had some major events in Shakopee, and the turnout has been fantastic. It really, it shows how strong our community is and how welcoming we are, and I think those are good things. That is my mayor's report, and we'll move down here to the administration report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You all nailed it. Summer's in full swing. Our city staff and our community partners have been very, very busy, and will continue to be that way with all the city events. I won't list them again. We do have absentee voting starting here at City Hall Friday. It's for the primary election. Election Day is August ninth. But early absentee voting will be held here for Shakopee residents and I believe our township residents as well during normal business hours. And then there'll be some expanded hours once we get closer to Election Day. City staff will be participating in the torch run tomorrow. It's a sponsorship of Special Olympics partnership with our police department, and Special Olympics have been doing it for a number of years. So watch for the torch running through town tomorrow. And then, as an update to you all, DSI contacted me. They have corrected over seven hundred invoices with those contamination charges that we had talked about at the last city council meeting. And so that you all know that those accounts are being credited as we speak. They will all be completed prior to the next billing cycle.
Do the customers know that that's happening?
Yes, exactly. We've been working with them on communication as well.
Well, I think that, out of that meeting, to see the city website enhance their information aspect and the better links.
Yep.
And then, I guess, we have the app now directly to Dick's, so for notifications, stuff like that. So I think that was a great opportunity a couple of weeks ago, and I, I feel really that some good information came out of it. And great for residents, go on our city website, get the Dick's app. Plenty of information to answer your questions.
And Dick's has actually updated their website as well since their presentation to us. They've made a number of really great changes, so check that out as well.
Great. Thank you. Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Fantastic. All right. Item number nine, other businesses. Is there any other business before this council? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank council and staff and the community for their understanding, support, and condolences for the loss of my mother. Appreciate it.
Very well.
Want to make it public.
Thank you. Any other business before this council? Otherwise, we would move ahead to item number ten. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, July fifth, 2022, at seven PM.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, Counselor Lehman.
July fifth, are we expecting fireworks at that meeting?
Of course. Right after Fourth of July.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
Good. A lot of activities in our community still coming. Get that, get out and enjoy it. And I have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We stand adjourned at eight twenty-four.